Okay, noting the time and the presence of a quorum, I call the Acton-Boxboro Regional School Committee to order. I want to start by noting that in the Acton Town election, Amy Krishnamurthy, Maya Minkin, and Paul Murphy were all re-elected. The Boxboro election is May 16th. My next order of business, I'm very sad about, this is Maria Nealan's last big school committee meeting. We're going to keep her working right till the end, but this is her last one. Maria has been an amazing partner at the table. She consistently works hard. She's been, between the Boxboro School Committee and the Regional School Committee, she's been serving for 11 years, I think. And she's just always hardworking. She takes the hard jobs. She takes the hard issues. She's been chair multiple times. She's done negotiation subcommittee. I've never had to do that. Thank you, Maria. Policy subcommittee, all the really, really important areas that school committee addresses, she's contributed. She's passionate. She's informed. She uses data and information to help make her decisions. And she's been, for me, an incredible mentor and partner at the table. And I thank you so much. Yeah. (applause). I don't know if anyone else wants to share anything, Bridget?
I do. I know all your secrets. Or some of them, anyway. So, we ran for the first time together for the Boxboro seat. And I can remember, and I can't even believe this, but I can remember when I was first getting to know you, you kept saying how nervous you were to talk in public. Where has that gone? (laughter) I mean, it's really amazing. No, well, you hide it really well. You've been a tremendous leader for us, and thank you so much. It's been a real pleasure to be a colleague around the table with you over the years. So, thank you. Amy.
I think all of us around the table can attest to the fact that Maria has been a true asset to the district, but for me, this is such a personal loss.[167.12][167.12](laughing) Maria was who encouraged me to run for the Boxboro seat four years ago, and she's just been a constant source of insight and wisdom and compassion and encouragement. And I'm just having a hard time imagining the next three years without you. But you're going to do awesome on Board of Selectment, and I'm excited for your next chapter.
Maria has also, Maria also was a big influence in my decision to run for school committee four years ago. Not sure if I should thank you or not thank you at this point, but you'll be missed.
So, I served on the negotiation committee with Maria, and I can only hope to, in the next round, to channel the strength and wisdom that you showed. I appreciate that.
So, I can't imagine continuing without Maria here. I will not laugh as much, I'm sure, without having you sitting over here telling me things, helping me understand a lot of stuff. And I have a feeling that we're going to be calling you a lot and asking you for a lot of other, you know, participation. I can't even talk.
I think I, I have to thank Maria for all he, or all her great contributions for our committee. And I did send email to Maria, surprised I'm the only new school committee member. I learned a lot from her, and she will be my bible in the future. I'm going to call her for so many advice, or, you know, so that, that will happen. You will see it. Okay? Thank you so much.
There we go. Yeah. Maria, I just wanted to share with you that I've so enjoyed working on this committee with you, and I've learned a lot from you. I want you to know that. And I've so also enjoyed hearing your perspective and engaging with you in conversation. It's meant a lot to me. So, thank you.
And certainly, Maria, and this would hold true for anybody, the thankless job of being a volunteer, and few know the amount of hours that are put into the work that is seen sometimes visibly in this environment, but also many, many more hours undoubtedly behind the scenes. So, thank you, on behalf of the school system and our families.
Can we have this lovely chair? I have my mini van if you need help. I didn't know what you brought here today. And this is for you all, but you might be too tall for this. Yeah, it's a day to carry. So. Thank you.
I actually have a few thoughts that I wrote down, because I am still nervous about speaking in public.[373.81][373.81](laughing) It seems odd that this is my last Thursday night school committee meeting. When I ran for the seat, I was a stay-home mom, and I wanted to give back to my community. And I thought, you know, school committee seems like an easy way to do that, to give back. And it didn't take very long for me to learn that this was not easy, and it was a lot of work. But I really love being on this committee. I really, really do. I've learned so much from everybody, and I love the work that we do, and I will miss it, and I'll miss all of you. The ice princess is, like, melting a little bit here.[417.12][417.12](laughing) I want to take a minute to thank my family. I have missed in 11 years birthdays, mostly my husband's, never my children's.[425.12][425.12](laughing) At least a few anniversaries for school committee meetings. I've had weeks like this one, where I've been out four nights straight. Sometimes I manage to cook. A lot of times, I manage to throw menus and money at people and say, order food. I could not have spent as much time and energy in this role without the support of my husband and my children, so I really do thank them. I want to acknowledge the amazing staff, and in particular, the central office staff. This district is so lucky to have every single one of you. And Beth, I want to take you with me. I know you can't go with me, but I'm not really sure how I'm going to keep it all straight without you. I just want to really thank you so much for all your help through the years. When I was chair, I don't think I would have made it through that year without your help. So, thank you so much. I've served on a lot of boards with a lot of people over the last 11 years, and this may be one of the best groups of people that I've worked with. We may not always agree, and sometimes the disagreements can be heated, but in the end, I think we all respect one another in our opinions. To my Acton colleagues, I am not sure that this town understands how lucky they are to have you representing them. Your passion for the children in this district comes out in everything you do on this board. To my Boxboro group, you are by far the most amazing group of women I have ever worked with, and I feel honored to have served with you. I thank you for your counsel, and your wisdom, and your hard work, and especially your friendship over the years. Serving on this committee has been an honor, and I have loved every minute of it. As you all go forward, just remember why we do what we do. We do it for the 5,000 kids in this school district that come through these doors every single day. We don't do it for a particular group of students. We don't do it for the loudest parents or the loudest taxpayers. We do it for all the kids. And if you always remember that, we'll always do right by the kids. Thank you.
I just want to ask again, who did you thank in there especially?
My family. Oh, my God. (laughing).
Okay. I wasn't expecting that.[574.12][574.12](laughing). So, now I get to read a list of 12 warrants that I can't even see. Okay. So, we have warrant 17-019 dated March 23rd, 2017, in the amount of $1,969,766.30. Warrant 17-020 PR dated March 30th, 2017, in the amount of $1,126,029.43. Warrant 17-020 dated April 6th, 2017, in the amount of $724,191.50. Warrant 17-021 PR dated April 13th, 2017, in the amount of $497,217.83. Warrant 17-021 dated April 20th, 2017, in the amount of $1,749,274.30. Warrant 17-022 PR dated April 27th, 2017, in the amount of $906,551.72. Warrant 17-019 JH dated March 23rd, 2017, in the amount of $11,566.80. Warrant 17-019 BL dated March 23rd, 2017, in the amount of $984.75. Warrant 17-020 SH dated April 6th, 2017, in the amount of $10,798. Warrant 17-020 BL dated April 6th, 2017, in the amount of $29,425.63. Warrant 17-021 BL dated April 20th, 2017, in the amount of $500. Warrant P-1720 and P-1720V dated March 30th, 2017, in the amount of $2,329,623.18. Warrant P-1721 and P-1721V dated April 13th, 2017, in the amount of $2,384,330.91. Warrant P-1722 and P-1722V and P-1721M dated April 27th, 2017, in the amount of $2,112,298.7. For a total of $13,852,558.42. Thank you. Please, please be sure to sign them before you leave this evening. Okay, and we have minutes. We have many minutes. Minutes from April 3rd, which was the pre-Acton Town meeting. Minutes from March 16th, February 16th, February 2nd, which is an addendum, and January 21st. We don't have February, oh, that'll be, right, okay, not February 2nd. And January 21st. Any concerns with any of the minutes? Can I have a motion to approve? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, those are all approved. That takes us to public participation. This is the time, if there's anyone in the audience who has anything to address that is not already on our agenda, now would be the time to come forward. And seeing no one, we will move to the elementary, single-tier busing analysis.
Thank you, Mary. Good evening. Item number five is inclusive of two items. 5.1 is an extensive report that is in your packet, and 5.2 we'll get to in just a few moments, and that's the slide presentation. Just as a bit of a backdrop to this item, upon my arrival in the district three years ago, one of the many issues that I know that I quickly heard concerns about and questions was the state of our current busing system. Specifically, the unresolved issue of getting to "single tier," as it's often referred to "busing," and how or whether or not the school system could ever get to that point of achieving this end, of having essentially only two tiers, as opposed to what we currently right now have, and that's three tiers of busing. One tier at the elementary and one at the secondary. It really has been, I think, an unresolved question since my arrival, and the school committee, at least at the last juncture when considering this, ruled out the pursuit of such for the time being, with the overarching concern around the financial resources that were, at the time, profiled as necessary in order to make this happen. Flashing forward these, these three years, and now with a strong interest in our community around the possibility of switching start times, the consideration of single tier and the mix of possible options to reach this end, again, really comes to the foreground. How many buses will it take to facilitate this? In an effort to revisit those questions around realizing single tier, JD recommended a number of months back that to have a third party help us analyze our current transportation system and help us determine how many more buses will be necessary to help achieve this option felt to be a prudent direction to go. We partnered with Greeman Peterson Incorporated, or GPI, as they're also known, to conduct this analysis, and they are here this evening to present their report. As you will note, it's a lengthy report, dense with a lot of information, and it represents truly, I think, the complexity, or at least scratches the surface, the complexity of our transportation system here. Not only is this here tonight to give you a background of this, but as well at the conclusion, based upon the analysis that you see and the cost estimations, we are interested in a sense of the committee as to whether or not our start time effort should or should not include the single tiers in some of the options that we'll be sharing with the community for feedback very soon. With that, I'll turn it over to JD to introduce the report and then our guest tonight.
11 years and your fifth single-tier elementary busing presentation, right?[1026.12][1026.12](laughing) Well, I am sure this is by far the most sound. I just want to give a quick backdrop and introduce Nicole Rogers, who is a engineer in training with GPI. You know, when Glenn and I were discussing this again earlier this year, as many of you know, Maria especially, we've been through several iterations of looking at this data and trying to understand how we could, if we could create something that could possibly work, that could be economically feasible. We tried to work with our routing software through a consultant a couple of years ago, and, you know, the, we presented that information here. I think, as I presented it, I said I didn't really believe in it. You know, as I looked at it and looked at it on the, you know, when you start to go out into the community and see the things that they put together, it's like, you know, I just don't really think this is safe or sound. And when Glenn brought it up again, I was like, you know, it wasn't very easy to find someone to do this work. So, I recall GPI because as a citizen, I served on the Kelly's Corner Planning Committee, and GPI did the traffic analysis work around the Kelly's Corner infrastructure. And I was just impressed by them as individuals. They're, they're smart people, and I figured if we just got some smart people together, maybe we could, you know, do some work around it. Plus GPI had all this traffic data for, for Acton, which is very beneficial to kind of hit the ground running. So, with that, I'm going to turn this over to Nicole, and happy to answer any questions or anything like that after.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you, everyone, for having me tonight. Like JD said, my name is Nicole Rogers. I'm an engineer with GPI. We're an engineering, planning, design, and construction management firm with offices all along the East Coast. I'm located in Wilmington, Mass., so not too far from here. The main purpose that I'm here tonight, like Glenn said, the school district is investigating several school start times in order to achieve a delay for the high school. That being said, school transportation becomes an extremely operational and fiscal constraint that needs to be addressed prior to moving forward with those. So, as part of the investigation, the school district wanted to assess the possibility of moving towards, from a three-tiered routing system to a two-tiered routing system. So, how many buses are required to do that? What are the fiscal constraints of that? And any operational kind of adjustments that need to be made? So, as such, GPI prepared a school bus routing analysis, which hopefully you all had the opportunity to look over. I'm sorry, it's, it's pretty long, and there's a lot in there. But basically, this presentation is going to kind of go over the existing transportation practices, because it is really important to understand the current complexities of the system, as well as go into some of the proposed transportation practices, and then get into some of the requirements for bus and personnel. And then we'll kind of gauge some potential start times and go over the cost implications, and then we'll kind of recap, and we'll open it up for any questions. So, kind of looking at the existing start time routing system, so currently, the high school starts at 7:23 a.m. In comparison to other high schools in the area, this is relatively very early. So, currently, you have a three-tiered routing system. The high school will service first, followed by two tiers of elementary. You'll see that Tier 1 services both the high school and the junior high with about 2,700 students. And this takes 32 routes in the morning and 32 routes in the afternoon. Now, you'll see that Tier 2 services Douglas, Gates, and Blanchard. And Tier 3, Conan, Miriam, and McTown. However, you will see that in Tier 1, you have 32 buses servicing 2, 2,700 students, but in Tiers 2 and Tier 3, you need the same 32 buses plus an additional bus to service half the students of that in Tier 1. So, why is this happening? Basically, it's a lot of the existing system. So, right now, the system kind of works in this breathing-in-and-out network. So, a lot of the travel time within the trip time is dedicated from travel to and from the schools, rather than actually servicing the students. There's also a lot of other constraining factors, which includes school choice, meaning that students aren't regionally assigned to a school. This means that a student all the way out in Boxboro might be attending, you know, the further school in Acton, and that just itself creates really long trip times. Next, you have the geography and topography. So, Acton and Boxboro combined for approximately 31 square miles. Relatively rural in nature, with a lot of windy, narrow roadways, which aren't necessarily conducive to bus maneuverability. You also have almost universal door-to-door service, so this means that the buses literally picking up every student at their home. That's really hard to plan for, in order to balance the ridership and the trip length. So, if you have a bus stopping every single time, it just adds up to that total time. Also, we have regional district transportation requirements. So, Massachusetts state law states that all students within a regional district are required transportation. Therefore, no matter how far you reside to your, however far you reside from the school that you're attending. So, you could be five minutes away from the school, but you're still required transportation. Also, fiscal and storage capacity. Obviously, it would be great to have everyone on the same tier, but that would just, you know, you'd need a ton of buses, and it would, it costs a lot, and where do you put those buses? Also, adhering to the athletic schedule, so any change in school scheduling must, like, be conducive to, you know, students being released early enough to get to their games and such. And also, this drop-off, pick-up, pickup window. So, right now, buses are required to service students within a 15-minute period within the bell time. So, this kind of results in non-flexible routes and possibly drivers rushing to get students there on time. And then last but not least, the lack of neighborhood schools. So, right now, everything is all centrally located. So, if you were to have, you know, a couple of schools in Boxboro, a couple more in Acton, a bus would be able to regionally service that, that school without having to go back and forth, back and forth. So, probably the most important part of routing is knowing where you need to route to. So, we were able to take this existing student population and put this spatially on a map. So, this map shows the student density population. So, the darker areas indicate areas where student population is more dense within a square mile, while some of those lighter areas result in a sparse density. So, this is really great for planning purposes. So, for areas with a darker population, we can say, you know, we'll need more buses to transport that greater number of kids, but since they're so densely populated, we won't need to make as many stops. Rather than some of these sparse areas, you know, there are not enough, there aren't as many kids, so you won't require as many buses, but they will need to make a lot more stops to service all those students. So, taking a look at the existing ridership, the Transportation Department conducts ridership studies every season, so this is from fall 2016, and these numbers will show that approximately 60% of high school and junior high school students are riding the bus, while 75% of elementary students are riding the bus. And it should be noted that these numbers can fluctuate throughout the year, so depending on whether, you know, the season, family circumstances, anything like that. And next, we'll look at the existing utilization rates, which is, actually, gives you a great inside look at how the system is really operating. And as this table suggests, and hopefully you were able to kind of give it more of a look over prior to this, the current transportation system isn't operating as efficiently as one would hope. And a lot of this is because of those constraining factors that we talked about. So, the geographical constraint, as well as a lack of resources. So, what are these numbers telling us? Basically, the high school and the junior high school tier is overutilized. So, currently, if every high school and junior high school student that is enrolled in school right now were to ride the bus on any given day, there would not be enough buses to accommodate every student. A lot of these buses on the high school and junior high school tier have over 100 students assigned per bus, where the maximum capacity is 83. So, that results in some students possibly may not be serviced, transportation to school. Conversely, in elementary tier, it's very underutilized. So, like I said before, both Tiers 2 and Tier 3 require a greater number of buses to service half the students than that of Tier 1. And like we said, that's because of this breathing-in-and-out network that the system currently has, as well as some of those other constraining factors. Specifically, those students that are participating in school choice. Basically, just the overall distance results in really long trip lengths. So, the elementary tier is essentially underutilized, because you have to balance the ridership with the trip length. Therefore, if we were to just merge to a two-tiered system right now, utilizing the existing practices that are in use right now, the routes that are in use, the stops that are in use, combining those two elementary tiers as is, it would require a total of 66 buses, which would be over-doubling the existing fleet and doubling the existing personnel that we have right now. Therefore, modifications are essential in order to reduce this number of buses and make this a more possible scenario. And so, how do we do that? We kind of introduce some new proposed transportation practices. So, number one, planning based on actual ridership, and I'll get a little bit more into detail of all these. Number two, the removal of cul-de-sac service. Three, implementing walk zones. Four, moving towards a cluster stop approach. Five, balancing the maximum number of students assigned per bus. And six, kind of balancing this trip length and the pickup-dropoff window. So, in an effort to further increase efficiency, the school district should look into planning based more on actual ridership, rather than assuming full ridership. So, this will ultimately reduce the number of buses required. So, if we remember from earlier, approximately 60% of the high school, junior high school tier is utilizing the bus, while 75% of the elementary tier is utilizing this bus. It's important to add a buffer in there, just to account for, you know, weather situations, any family situations. So, we added a 10% buffer, which is rather conservative. So, this will result in assuming 70% ridership in the high school, junior high school tier, and an 85% ridership in the elementary tier. Next is the removal of cul-de-sac service, and I apologize that it's kind of difficult to see, but the red lines indicate all of the cul-de-sac roads in Boxboro and Acton, and this is based off of GIS information from the state of Massachusetts. So, basically, the removal of cul-de-sac service is because the geometry does not facilitate bus maneuver down these roads. So, a lot of the radii in the cul-de-sacs is too tight, which result in some buses having to back up the cul-de-sac roads, which creates an extremely safety hazard. Therefore, all students who reside on a cul-de-sac road will now be serviced at the end of the street. And this will also reduce travel time as well, since buses don't have to go down and then turn back around and come out. since buses don't have to go down and then turn back around and come out. Next is the implementation of walk zones. And before I get too far into this, please know that this was not included within the modeling that we conducted. And this is because Massachusetts state law states that every child within a regional school district is required transportation. So implementing a walk zone would require a policy change. But that being said, if you were, you know, to have kind of conversations and make this more of a discussion, implementing a one-mile buffer walk zone for high school and junior high school students could result in the reduction of at least two buses. And obviously, a crucial part of this is safety, so making sure that there's existing sidewalk available, crossings available. And therefore, we took the sidewalk GIS layer from the town of Acton and placed it into here to see where students are, you know, provided that safe walking route. And we feel as though students within these buffers shown up here do fall within that. And we also tried to apply this philosophy to the elementary tier, but given the existing locations of the schools, there's really no available sidewalk, and safety is the main priority, so we opted against that. Next would be moving towards a cluster stop approach. So this provides the district the opportunity to service more students within a shorter amount of time. So basically, kids will be walking to a stop, rather than receiving door-to-door service. So you'll see the chart up here. Pre-K and K will still receive door-to-door service, while grades one through six will have to walk a maximum of point one-five miles. And grades seven through twelve will have to walk a maximum of a quarter mile. So to kind of put this in perspective, Massachusetts state law says the maximum amount that you can walk to a stop is a mile. So in regards to that, it's pretty, pretty small. So like I said earlier, safety is the main concern here. So obviously, we took a look at where all the sidewalks are. And if we couldn't see sidewalk, we went into Google Street View or other kind of, you know, ways that we can get in there without having to use all of our resources. But basically, cluster stop approach increases the average number of students per stop and per route, and decreases the average number of stops and total stop time per route. So we can really see the benefits of this in the total stop time. So in the high school junior high school tier, if we were to implement cluster stops and more students are walking to stops, you can cut down the average stops per route from almost twenty to ten. So when you kind of calculate the total stop time, it's thirty seconds to stop a bus for any student, and then five seconds for that student to board. So cutting that down, you have about a forty-six percent reduction in total stop time for the high school tier. So that's almost five minutes. In the elementary tier, children are walking less, and we found that some of the sidewalk isn't as available. So we weren't able to cut down as many average stops, but we did get it down to eighteen for a fifteen percent reduction in total stop time. And this is good on an environmental and health benefit as well. Your kids are walking, and, you know, the bus isn't stopping and going as much. Next is balancing this maximum number of students assigned to a bus. So clearly, there is a need for a balance. Some high school routes have over a hundred students assigned to them, while some elementary routes only have thirty-five assigned to them. So in that regard, there needs to be more of a balance here. So looking at the maximum numbers of students that are allowed on the bus is eighty-three. So there are eighty-three seats. After several conversations, we decided on a district target capacity of sixty students for the elementary tier and fifty-five students for the high school tier. So sixty students elementary, they're smaller, they can fit more comfortably. And this is less than your maximum bus capacity in terms of comfortability, and as well as giving the bus driver more control of the bus, essentially. So when assigning maximum students to a bus, we want to take both of those into consideration, as well as playing in those ridership numbers that we talked about earlier. So if we were to take the elementary tier, for example, if eighty-five percent of the seventy assigned students were to ride the bus, it would be right at the sixty district target capacity. However, if all those students were to ride the bus, it would still be under the maximum capacity of the bus. So every student would be guaranteed a seat on the doomsday scenario. In regards to trip length and the pickup-drop-off window, we decided that the maximum time a student is on the bus should be targeted to forty minutes. Most of the students will be on the bus less than forty minutes. However, there is a handful of students whose trip lengths will exceed forty minutes. And those are students residing really far away from the school that they are attending. So basically, those students who are participating in school choice. So this may be a bit extreme, but it's a result of having to balance that ridership and that trip length. And therefore, for those trips that may exceed the forty minutes, we recommend extending the pickup and drop-off window by fifteen minutes to have buses service within a half-hour window of bell times. Like I said, this is extreme, extreme cases for those students residing far away from their homes. And I think these graphics, like, say the most within this whole presentation. So these are graphics depicting drive times. So your yellow dot in the middle, this is for the high school junior high. So basically, we took historic traffic data on a Thursday at eight AM to depict some of that worst-case scenario, and inserted it into a GIS environment, utilizing the existing street network. So it's able to pick up, like, speed limits, and, you know, how fast you can go on certain roads, stuff like that. So you'll see that the blue area indicates a drive time of zero to five miles from the school. The green area is five to ten, and the red is ten to twenty. So this allows for planners to visually see where routes can service more kids within a shorter amount of time, and vice versa. And it's really easy to pinpoint some of these outliers that we're talking about, where trip lengths might exceed forty minutes. These are some of the elementary schools, and the same thing. But these graphics also allow us to match routes. So in other words, you wouldn't want to have one bus, you know, service a red route in the first tier and service that same red route in the second tier. You would want them to service a red route in the first tier and a blue route in the second tier, in order to offset that trip length. And therefore, you'll be more within that pickup-drop-off window, and the maximum time spent on the bus will significantly reduce. And now we get to some of the fun stuff. So how many buses are required to do this? So currently, there's twenty-seven hundred students in both the elementary tier combined and the high school tier. So assuming that every student rode the bus using the maximum capacity, so eighty-three students, you would need a minimum of thirty-three buses to service every student. However, if we assume eighty-five percent ridership, you know, for the elementary tier, and apply that district target rate, we're looking at a max required number of buses to be thirty-nine. However, that doesn't take into account some of these long trips that we've been talking about. So we need to put in additional buses for efficient service. Putting our total number of buses up to forty-two for elementary and thirty-eight for high school. And then, once you add five spare buses for any bus malfunction, especially in the winter if they're not starting, that results in forty-seven total buses for your elementary tier and forty-three for your high school junior high tier. And I think this chart says a lot as well. So this is utilizing these bus numbers, like, what is the utilization rates that we're gonna get out of this? So looking at the bus, maximum bus capacity, right? So in the high school and junior high school tier, we have a district grade of fifty-five. So fifty-five out of eighty-three students or seats available would result in a sixty-six percent utilization rate. And the same thing for the elementary tier, it would be a seventy-two percent utilization rate. So you'll kind of see, basically, what we wanted to do was drive down these existing overutilized routes in the high school to a healthy utilization rate, and bring up those underutilized elementary routes to a healthy utilization rate. So basically, if we're planning based on ridership and trying to meet these district target capacities, our utilization rate based on the district target rate should be a hundred percent. But we decided to add in a little bit of a buffer there. So our utilization rate comes in at ninety percent. So that gives you room to grow or project as, you know, the years go on. So I think this says a lot. Moving into some of the proposed start times. Scenario A has the elementary starting at seven fifty, and the high school junior high starting at eight thirty. So in this scenario, you would achieve a sixty-seven-minute delay in the high school start time. However, the three-ten dismissal might be a little bit tricky to accommodate athletic travel. And also, having the elementary be dismissed prior to the high school may be difficult for some of those families that rely on the older kids to watch younger kids after school. So there are things like that to think about. Also, in this tier, you have elementary students being picked up as early as seven-ten in the morning, which is significantly earlier than what it is right now. However, the thing to focus on for, you know, a delayed high school start time is that high school students will receive more sleep. So in this scenario, you know, they're being picked up as early as seven fifty compared to six-thirty right now. So that's pretty significant. And scenario B, you have the high school and junior high school being serviced first at eight o'clock, and the elementary starting at eight forty. In this scenario, you achieve a thirty-seven-minute delay. This works pretty well with athletics and dismissal time, and also accommodates those older students taking care of younger siblings in the afternoon if need be. For this, the elementary tier is not much of a, as much of a change for families right now. And in this tier, you're still getting that, you know, delay in high school. So students, high school students being picked up as early as seven-twenty. So merging to a two-tiered system can happen, but it will result in an addition of equipment and personnel. So going through the routing system, you actually end up with a reduction in thirty-four routes. But in the elementary tier, you have an increase of eleven buses and seven in the high school tier, and an increase of eleven drivers in the elementary tier and seven in the high school tier. So obviously, you have to plan your fiscal constraints to that eleven buses. So what does that cost? With the increase of eleven buses and eleven drivers, we can expect a total increase of approximately seven-hundred-fifty-thousand-nine-hundred dollars in the transportation and personnel budget in the first year of operation. The state provides reimbursement for regional transportation for students who reside more than a mile and a half away from school, with approximately seventy percent of our students residing more than a mile and a half away. The state reimbursement for these additional transportation costs is expected to be around three-hundred-seventy-eight thousand, meaning that seven, uh, three-hundred-seventy-two thousand would be covered in the ongoing school operating budget. So this wouldn't be for this year, it would be the second year, because the state reimbursement has to wait a year after implementation. So this table really goes through some of these cost implications. So your personnel costs end up being four-hundred-sixty-six thousand, and bus costs end up being approximately two-hundred-eighty-five thousand. So this covers benefits, you know, salary, workman's comp, the bus lease, gas, fuel, storage for these buses, everything. So like I said, after a year of implementation, you can expect state reimbursement, and that will result in an ongoing budget of three-hundred-seventy-two thousand. To kind of put this in perspective, I know those numbers sound scary. But right now, the cost per student to transport is five-hundred-twenty-two dollars per student. This proposed budget would put that cost at six-hundred-sixty-two dollars, but the national average for cost per student is nine-hundred-sixty-one. So although this cost would increase, the Acton School District would continue to transport students at a rate much lower than the national average. So kind of to sum this all up, merging to a two-tiered system is possible, but a lot of changes are gonna have to be made, including some of these proposed transportation practices. So planning based on actual ridership, removing these cul-de-sac service, implementing walk zones, moving towards this cluster stop approach, balancing out the maximum number of students assigned per bus, as well as balancing the trip length in this pickup-drop-off window. So all of these adjustments are required in order to minimize the number of buses required in order to complete safe and efficient routes. It's understood that these changes can bring up a lot of alterations in family schedules and potentially induce some stress on the school community as well. And therefore, it's really critical to involve all the stakeholders initially and often, with the intent of educating the public on the trade-offs of a delayed start, uh, high school start time, as well as to, you know, get their concerns and potentially create more alternate time scenarios that work well with them. So obviously, the decision, you know, to accommodate a delayed start does come at a price, especially when merging to a two-tiered system. Like I said, the budget is expected to be seven-hundred-fifty-thousand-nine-hundred dollars in the first year of operation and approximately three-hundred-seventy-two years after. So although this may, you know, increase the transportation budget and pose a significant change for a lot of families, it does result in a system with heavy, uh, healthy utilization rates, efficient routing and safe routing, more safe than it is now, cross-school collaboration between staff, consistent elementary schedule throughout the whole system, facilitation of athletic and extracurricular activities, and also, most importantly, achieve a delayed high school start time for these high school students. So now, I'll open it up for any questions that you guys may have, more than help me answer anything. I know it's a lot to take in.
That was fantastic, lots of great information. Paul?
Yeah.
Thank you, Nicole. And I agree, this is, this is the first time I've really got a sense that I can put my arms around this issue. And, but I do have a question. Back in, when you're talking about walk zones for proposed practices, I thought I heard you say that for a region, there's a, there's a law that governs that?
Yes.
But then, it would require a change in policy?
Right, so Massachusetts state law right now requires that every student within a regional transportation district is required transportation. So this actually wasn't included in our modeling, but rather just brought up as a discussion point. So in order for you to implement this and possibly reduce the number of buses further, this would require policy change. So going to the state and, you know, asking if this is acceptable.
So the, the change of policy would be to align with the law? Is that...
We'd ask the state law to change, that's the policy.
That was, that's my question, thank you.
Are we sure about that, Nicole? That's the only thing of everything you said that I have a question about? Because my understanding was within one and a half miles, we do not have to, outside of one and a half miles, we have to provide transportation. Isn't that correct? Or Glenn?
So the, um, no, I, I think, so I know for certain that if we had a, that if we had a fee-based system, we would only be allowed to fee students who live within that one-point-five. The other issue, so you could, you could fee students within one-point-five. Alternatively, I think it would be acceptable to institute a walk zone of, from one, you know, pick a number, anything less than one-point-five, if you were to reimburse the family's mileage rate. So you could also do it that way instead. Go ahead.
Just, just to clarify, because I did reach out to the Department of Ed, I just want to correct what JD had said there. So according to my most recent conversation with the Department of Education, regional districts, we fall into that, of course, are required to transport all students who live more than two miles, more than two miles from school. It's very different in a municipal setting, and we've talked about that before. Depending on your policy, you may change a, you may charge a transportation fee, but that would be a local decision. Reimbursement falls into this, of course, as well, too, as a regional district, and that's an important, that's an important component. And that has to do with the one and a half miles. Students who live one-point-five miles or more from school. Then there's the calculation that's included is around salaries, contract services, and the like as part of the reimbursement. But we're in a regional setting, and it's a little bit different. This requirement is there, more than two miles, we must transport.
Christine?
Can I ask a clarifying question to Glenn? Because when we went through this last time with regionalization, my understanding was we couldn't charge a transportation fee if we were getting state reimbursement for busing. Is anyone else remembering it that way? Right?
Right. And, and so I have not pursued a second opinion on that from Desi. That's one, the Department of Ed, that's one individual, but the, and this is, there's been some conflicting, I do think, and I know that this has been referenced before, some conflicting information around the transportation fee. Rob O'Donnell from the Department of Ed, back in March, said that we could, depending on your policy, charge that fee. So to the, to the degree that I've gone to a sec, for a second opinion, I've not at this point.
My guess is that they, we couldn't get reimbursement on the part we're getting the fee on. Maybe we could get reimbursement on the remaining part, the remaining cost. Because they would never let us get double dip. Yeah, yeah.
I'm sorry. I don't mean to be dense, but I want, I want some clarification. So then, are you saying that in the regional district, we could establish walk zones and that would be okay? Contrary to what we heard? I just, I just want to make sure I understand that.
So, uh, a court, no, it's a fair question. So regional school districts required to transport all students who live more than two miles from school.
Okay.
One, two miles from school.
Okay. So within two miles of school. So if we, we did a walk zone of a mile, that would be okay? That wouldn't violate a law?
According to the most recent outreach that I have had from Desi.
And I have, I'm gonna ask one because it's related to this. This number that you calculated, the one ninety-five students, does that take into consideration that some of those students may already be choosing to walk? Because I do believe many, at least in Indian Village, walk to Douglas.
At, at this point, no, that didn't take into that account.
I have some question about this. So I, I do not really understand before, within a two mile, within two miles, what about those students? So they should walk to school without a bus? Or outside of two miles, you get bus transportation? But what if I just leave one mile away from the school? I have no bus service before?
Well, we provide it now, but it sounds like we could say they have to walk or we could charge a fee. But right now, our policy is that we bus everyone.
Okay. So what, what about the reimburse? Some, someone mentioned reimburse from what, what is that part?
So the state reimburses us for students, for every student we bus that's one and a half miles or further away from school, a proportion of the cost the state reimburses.
But, but we're talking about two miles?
Right. So if, if we chose not to provide busing at two miles, then we would not get reimbursed for the kids who are between one and a half and two miles.
Okay, I see. Yeah, okay, got that. I have some other questions from, you know. First of all, thank you for this very wonderful presentation. And just like Paul said, I echo Paul's voice. Finally, we got something we can see. We always talk about this and that, but we don't know what it could be yet. But now we have this wonderful presentation. I have one thing for Mary. Should we, should we share this with parents or not?
Well, this is a public document at this time. It's in our packet. So absolutely, you can share it with them.
Yeah, but how we have, if we share with the parents, how those, um, feedback will be heard from?
So we need to decide as a committee where we want to go with this because this affects, part of the reason it came to us is it affects the start time and we want that feedback from the community. If, if we decide this sounds feasible, then we may go to the community and ask about things like clustering, you know, what do they think of that? This, that and the other thing. And so we need to decide that and then I would imagine that a group would be involved with outreach from the community and getting feedback.
Okay, great. Thank you. There's one, two specifics, a specific thing about cul-de-sac. You mentioned that, but as, I live in a very long, round neighborhood, which is cul-de-sac. It's, it's, it's a round circle. The whole circle is what, and a half point mile, one point five miles. If the student need to walk around one miles to reach a bus stop, that could be really something in the morning or whatever. When it's the snow time, the snow piled on the sidewalk. So it's really not safe for a lot of students. Not just, I think we have somehow sixty, but just in my neighborhood. I don't know any other, just that could happen, okay? So in the wintertime, like the springtime, whatever, it's fine. But in the wintertime, the, the snow piled on the, you know, on the sidewalk. They need to walk point seven, point eight, point nine miles to reach a stop. It's a problem. Especially in the morning, wintertime. I think we probably look at some, some of the neighborhood there, you know, student may walk a really long time, maybe give it, you know, extra reasonable one more stop, something like that. That's just my suggestion. Okay? Another way, another thing is, yeah.
Yeah, no, I, well, I was just gonna say beyond just the cul-de-sac piece, but it's a relevant point and a good question. Just for, for the committee and the community to note, you know, this analysis and effort, this model was to try to get us closer to a better understanding around what single tier might look like in terms of the total number of resources. It's true that this model is based upon a couple of variables that Nicole mentioned, the cul-de-sacs and, and cluster stops and so on. By no means, and let me just stress this, by no means do these variables or the, or the application of these variables necessarily set this on the path. That is to say, if single tier were, were something that the community was interested in, the committee could support financially, there certainly would need to be more discussion around what some of these variables are. We, we, we may choose to adapt or change some of them and that may plus or minus result in another bus or two. So I think that that's just a really important point to point out. The other point of relevancy, I think, in terms of the, do we have all, do we transport all students or, or don't we? I know JD had shared, and maybe you want to speak to this, that there's been, in, in the past, there was, there was a variation in that, right? With the winter, could you just speak to that around how the district did that back, I think, eight, nine years ago?
Yeah, when I, actually, when I first started working here, I was fourteen. The, there was what they called winter busing and non-winter busing. And they, they didn't transport, when I was fourteen, fourteen years ago? I felt like I was fourteen then. The, um, the, the district did not bus students within one and a half, if I remember correctly. And in the winter months, they would bus everyone. During, when the, the campus was under kind of heavy construction, the high school mainly, you know, it was, it was getting more and more difficult, they felt like to create like a, a safe scenario with all the construction vehicles, et cetera. So Bill went to winter busing year-round. And to be honest with you, it didn't really change all that much. You know, there's the students, I think, that live within a, a short distance that want to walk, walk anyway and those that don't, it's, it's not a huge time sink in, in changing that. You know, it's, as you can see, it's not a huge number of students in our grand scheme of things.
And I would also add, I don't think what you're describing is a cul-de-sac. A cul-de-sac usually is at a dead end. It's not a road, not a circular road. It sounds like you're describing a circular road.
Yeah, it could be.
Yeah, I don't think that would apply here.
Oh, okay. So, um, thank you, Claire, and thank JD. And I think the presentation is really wonderful, so I'm almost like really wanting to jump in. I think that's the only thing I want to modify. That's all. Thank you.
Nicole, thank you. This is a really terrific examination of our system and gives us a lot of options. I think that we as a committee have to be really careful about going forward with this because just looking at the costs, seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the first year, four hundred thousand dollars for every year after that, and that's really risky money. I mean, Claire tells us all throughout the year, what we're gonna estimate the state reimbursement is gonna be, is it this or that? It makes a huge difference. Sometimes it makes a good difference to our budget, sometimes a bad. And so not only is it a huge number we have to plan on, it's a huge risky number. And I think if we think about these new transportation practices just pretty much as a group, because I think if we try to tweak them or take any out, our costs are only gonna go up. And I think the idea is, if we want to even try to do this, we have to have huge sacrifices, huge sacrifices in terms of the service people are used to, what they expect and what we're going to have to give up from our budget. Because I can't imagine we can just get seven hundred fifty thousand dollars more on top of everything else we're gonna need to get. So I really feel like we might be able to go forward with this, but we have to really be clear that it's gonna be major sacrifices by many, many people in many reasons in many areas. I think people really want single tier, they really want late start times. Okay, we just don't have the money to have everyone have everything they want. So if we get that, we have to really sacrifice in other areas and even go out with examples of what are seven hundred fifty thousand dollars of things we can cut from our budget? Because when I have conversations about this with people, they sometimes accuse us of just not prioritizing right. And if you really wanted to do it, you would just prioritize it. Well, these numbers are huge and it's not just a question of prioritizing. It's gonna be a question of really making sacrifices.
Just to clarify, sorry, Christina, just for the committee and for the community watching, and I want to stress this, sorry I didn't say it earlier. This analysis gives rise to the single tier and if there was a sense of the committee to move forward with these, they would represent some of the options that would be shared with the community for feedback to change our start times. We, we do have options that are, that resemble our current practices or our current structures, rather, with three tiers and that we have manipulated those times to change the start times that certainly have pros and cons as well as these do too, you know? And so I just want to make sure that that's clear, that the effort to gather feedback from the community certainly is not based just upon your desire or willingness to support additional financial resources. There are other options that, that would change things.
I think this might be for JD. Can we find the staff necessary to drive the buses, extra buses? Because I know that's been kind of a problem in the past.
Yeah, it's, it's, um, it's been a challenge certainly to, to, to maintain a full roster of bus drivers. You know, we operated this year without a full roster pretty much the whole year and, and our retirees have floated us. So yeah, it would be a challenge. I don't think it'd be any more of a challenge than it is currently. And that's, that's more of a statewide issue. It's not, that's not unique to us. We've been, you know, through the course of this year, trying to create, create some, uh, some ways or to enhance our benefit package, to make it more competitive. And that seems to have been very effective. You know, we have, our drivers are telling us that they want to stay here. And we've had, as of the last two weeks, I've had four people come in, you know? So time will tell, but it's, it's a challenge now and it'll be a challenge with this as well, you know?
Do all of our bus drivers, are they all considered full-time or are they, some of them part-time? And with the change to a two-tiered system, would that eliminate, would that create more part-time positions or possibility for them?
Yeah, given these hours here, everyone would still be over that magic nineteen-hour number. That is something to consider though, because, you know, with all the strides we made currently with our drivers, you know, a reduction in hours, you know, is also a reduction in their paycheck. So, you know, in that middle part of the day is, is where they would be idle. So, you know, Maria has a lot of creative ideas about how we could utilize that workforce here within the district during that time period. You know, maybe there are some things we could start doing with, with special education transportation, utilizing this workforce that we already have here. I know that's something that, that Dawn believes might be feasible. So, you know, hopefully that we will be able to find ways to utilize this workforce that we have that are, you know, benefited and also, you know, get some real value out of that, you know, tangible, tangibly.
You know, we've worked really hard to keep a full staff of bus drivers and like JD said, I think we made a lot of progress in that. We had gone through some turnover for a period of time. Just a couple of things. One, there is sort of a range here. The number of buses needed to meet district target rates is thirty-nine. Number of buses required for efficient service is forty-two. We based all the numbers on forty-two, so the numbers are somewhat conservative. And one of the things we've been talking about is it may make sense to contract out a piece of our busing. And one of the hard things, to take our whole transportation operation and contract it out means a lot of big changes and cutting people who've been with us for a long time and so on. But if we were to increase our fleet by eight to eleven buses, that would be the time to seriously consider contracting out potentially that much of the operation. So we wouldn't necessarily be taking on all of the responsibility of hiring those folks ourselves and, and then we could figure out efficiency-wise with the work that Nicole and JD are both doing, what piece of the operation makes sense to do that. So I'm not saying it's necessarily affordable. I understand, believe me. But there are things that we would work with between now and then to try to make it as efficient as we could.
And just to piggyback on that, thank you for reminding me. You know, we've, you guys know this very well, we put our entire operation out to bid three times since I, I've worked here. And we've had the main players in the room every time and when it comes time to submit a bid, they don't, they don't bid on it, for whatever reason. Yep.
When we put it out, though, we put it out with the current three-tiered system, right?
Correct. Yes.
So really?
That's correct.
That may be one of the reasons people aren't bidding on it.
That, that could be. Yep. The, um, one thing that we have, we have found though is, so, um, this year, we, we put out an alternate bidding situation that included just everyone who resided in Boxborough to see if, and across-town transportation. And DBus did bite on that. And the costs are relatively the same. I mean, so what we've found so far over these last three years is in, in year one, it seems like the contractor is a hair cheaper and by year three, we're a hair cheaper, because usually those contracts are three-year things. So the, the costs seem to be relatively neutral. But that is a way of trying to create an opportunity where we're not obligated to find forty-two, maintain forty-two bus drivers.
Christine? So from an educational standpoint, I think it makes sense to do this from a fiscal standpoint. That's where the rubber hits the road, so to speak. And that's where I'm stuck. I can't imagine us being able to find that much money going forward. But I think once we found it, then it'd be there, year after year. But I think it would take some sacrifice, particularly in the first couple of years. But what I'd like us to consider is what happens if we implement some of the suggestions about clustering, cul-de-sacs, et cetera, regardless of what we do with tiered busing? How much efficiency would we get out of our current system? And I think that's something to think about. I know in my neighborhood, we, you know, Boxborough, the kids walk to the bus stop. We didn't get picked up at our door. So I'm not sure where all these kids are getting picked up at their door. Maybe it depends on the street or the neighborhood or whatever. But I think we have more of a cluster situation where I live right now, in any case. I don't know about anybody else who lives in town in Boxborough versus Acton. Maybe that's the difference. But anyway, I think we should consider some of these changes possibly for next year and maybe that's a way to introduce some of this regardless of whether we go to a two-tiered system or not and maybe we get some efficiency out of it.
So I, I'm curious, we talk about the tier system and the tiers are defined by the schools? Is there a requirement to do that? Or, or that's our way of defining a tier? Well, so, so we have a, a bus that takes a route and goes all over the place and stops at a house that might have three kids in it, each kid going to three different schools? So three buses come by that house? Is there an opportunity to think of it in a different way where the bus goes to a house, three kids get on and the bus goes to three different schools?
We have, we have thought about that. I mean, that's- I mean, that certainly is another way of looking at it, but I think ultimately what we have is, we encounter so many delays at the school. I think that's our main prohibiting factor there. Like, for example, at Douglas, we can only fit four buses in the parking lot at a time, you know. So, those students would spend so much time driving in between the schools and idle time waiting their turn to get into the bus, you know, the loop. That's been our biggest drawback with that regard.
So, thank you for this presentation. This probably is one of the more clear, this is the clearest presentation I've seen on busing, so that's great, thank you. I have to agree with Christina. I know that the public wants this, but this isn't just $750,000, it's $750,000 at a time when we're going out and looking for design funds for a building project, and, you know, three buckets of capital projects. And so, I think, as nice as it would be to get onto two tiers, especially for the elementary parents, and putting the school's start times aside for a second, that every other year is, I can't imagine, I didn't have to live through it, I can't imagine it's that much fun, but we really, I think you really need to think long and hard about going out, because initially at least, it's almost, it's not override, but it's almost like this, you know, kind of like our capital was this year, right? But given the history we've had over the last, you know, few years, and looking at models, financial models going out, to look for that kind of money in addition to a 3% increase, just a 3% level service increase, that's going to be difficult. And for a lot of taxpayers, you know, particularly the seniors and the people who already are struggling to pay taxes, it's going to be a hard sell to say, you know, we want a different start time for the high school, or, you know, all the families want this. It's a hard sell. It's a lot of money, given what it takes to just get a 3% increase passed. So, something to think about.
And just to follow up, I'm not saying not to go out, but I guess I feel like I want a little support here. If we're going to go out with something that's really going to cost a lot, and really going to be hard, and really going to take sacrifices, I would like to go out just with more information to try to get people to understand that ahead of time, instead of the message somehow coming back that the school committee won't pay for it. Because that's, I think, what often happens to us. So, if we can decide to pitch this with real detail on what this money means to our budget, how many teachers we'd have to cut if we did this, you know, whatever it is, something to just get people to really understand the issue, then I'm fine, because I think people want single tier. It makes the 8:30 start time possible that all the position groups are recommending, but it also makes people realize how difficult it's going to be. So, I'm not saying not to do it, but I think to support us in some way before we go out, just with more information.
I'll have to say, the thing I'm concerned about going out is, if we only go to the parents, they're going to want it, and by going out with it, we say we're giving them a choice, we want their input. If we don't think it's going to fly financially, I think it's not with integrity that we're asking them for their opinion, because we're just going to say no. So, and it's a problem if we are then just going to the parent community. We then need to go to the wider community and figure out how to get that wider input, because we already see they're not coming to our forums on the building.
It's all working it online.
Yeah, maybe it's all online. And maybe working with our finance committees and running it past them first, it's a sizable amount of money, and, you know, and I think as a team, we need to say, what are we going to cut out of the budget? Because I don't think people are going to say, yeah, here's an extra 750, even when it's one time, you know, the 372 to 400, that's a lot of money. I mean, we struggle with our budget this year, we couldn't find anything to cut. How are we going to cut this much? I don't think it's going to be, oh, yeah. And I do hear parents say, I hear community members say, not just parents, they'd love to not have so many buses rolling through their neighborhood, but at what price are they willing to pay for it? I don't think it's going to be this much money. Eileen.
Bridgette is not here. I think I like what Bridgette said, and the problem we're talking about here, of course, is budget. But the idea, we've working on that, so many people working on the, you know, and also we're talking about the stress in high school. Every minute in high school counts in the morning, and all our children, some of your children grow up already. I have grown up one, I have little one. And in the morning, it's so hard pulling them out from their bed. And also, every one of our children, I mean, they grow up once in their middle school and high school time, for that three, four years, maybe. Okay, sleeping for them is so very important. We're just, we're spending so long time and talk about this for so long, I really hope this project can go.
I just want to interrupt, because Glenn did say there are options for changes in school start times without moving to a two-tiered system. With our current system, they're not presented to us here tonight, but the committee has come up with options to change school start times within the current busing approach.
Okay, so, we're talking about the, you know, I can see Christina present some, I mean, the concern, of course, I'm the one of the member here, too. So, the budget issue probably will be the really big issue. So, we're probably trying to find what could be the efficient way lower the operating cost. So, probably that's the good solution. But I support the whole thing, so that's what I want to say.
So, I have a question. I mean, this is coming to us at a time when we're also engaged in capital spending, but my question is, if this were cost-wise a no-brainer, would the cost be dependent on the choice of capital option that we selected for school buildings? If we chose one option versus another, does that change the cost of the single tier or two-tier?
So, if we had a, yeah, if we had a triple school or a twin school, would we save enough? I don't think anyone's calculated that. My guess is perhaps, but not enough to put a big dent in that. And the timing would be, we'd still incur the 750 year, yeah.
So, if there were some impact, I like the idea, because all I heard was reducing stress, and I mean, I'm in already, but with the cost, I'm just wondering if this is something that we should just focus on the capital needs, and once that's settled, then we revisit this to, I don't know, just a thought.
I'm excited by this presentation, I think it was beautifully done. I think it's something that should go forward as an option, making sure that we're very clear about the fiscal implications of each of the options put forward. Back when we were selling regionalization, it was understood that we would be able to at least investigate the possibility of moving to single-tier elementary, and I know that there is still resentment among Boxborough parents. Next year, we'll be on a late schedule again, when we're trying to sell a project for Acton. And I think that greater context should be taken into account. I think if we put it out there with the cost, at least we've shown a plan. There hasn't been something so concrete in the three years since regionalization, and at least to show that we really thought it through, even if we don't wind up.
I do, I don't know what the other start time options are. I do believe strongly we have to have an 8:30 start time option, go out there. So, if the other options aren't 8:30, then I do think we have to do this. And Katie, just to clarify, we're not selling an Acton project, we're selling an A.B. project, right? This is the A.B., it's the A.B. school building project, so let's all get on board.
If I may, it may help, it may not, I'm not sure, but depending on, and certainly we'll take your direction, but depending on your sense of us moving forward with these options to gather feedback, the intention in terms of the outreach survey to gather feedback is structured in such a way that we have a couple of options that don't require any additional resources, and the intent was to gather feedback on a preference of those two. Similarly, to gather a preference on the two that do require additional resources. And then a third question was, based upon all of the above, what would be the strongest preference? Again, just to recap sort of the direction ultimately of all of this, was to gather that feedback from the community, and then to bring that back towards the end of this year to this committee, with sort of then next steps to be determined by you as a committee going forward. Not making a final determination by any means, but providing insight for you as a committee to consider, whether that does or does not include additional financial resources. And then with the opportunity, as I think you may need it, for time to be taken into the fall to make any decision with, if we're on a path to change something, and that change would go into effect the following year, September of 2018.
So, I feel pretty strongly that if we go out there with this, it cannot be a simple survey that says, here are the options, the start times with three-tier, and here are the start times with two-tier. I think it needs to talk about the cost, and it needs to put the cost in context and say, you would need to pay X amount more in taxes, or we would cut 10 classrooms, or X services, like, what's that trade-off? Because people, it's just too easy to say, yes, I want it, if they don't understand what that cost implication is. And I think that, again, that if they're not understanding that context, they're all going to say, we want the double-tier, the two-tier, and then the expectation is, we're going to do it, and then when we say we can't, they're going to be upset with us.
I also think that before this goes out in a survey, or just out to the parent community, because that's what the survey is going to hit, is the parent community, we really do, I agree, I think we need to get some buy-in from the FINCOMs in both towns, from ALG and from BLF. And I am not one to normally say, we need to go out and get buy-in and opinions from these groups, but I think it's really important, because at the end of the day, if 90% of the survey respondents, who are mostly parents, say, yep, this is what we want, and then FINCOM in both towns, and it will be both towns, say, no, it just can't happen without massive cuts. So, I do think we need a little more buy-in from, kind of, you know, where we're going to need our blessings on this budget, long-term.
Okay, so, I think you're hearing our input, and so, I think, I don't know, if this falls under the school's start time committee purview, or whoever it is, if you need additional support in getting this community input, let us know, and we'll work to help with that. Any other thoughts or comments?
Thank you very much, everyone.
Okay, budget update.
As I mentioned to the committee earlier today, in an email, Claire is not with us tonight, and she's tending to responsibilities as a member of her local town government this evening, so I will try my best to fill in for her for this part of the agenda, and that's the respective budget updates. First Acton Town Meeting update, very briefly, Monday, April the 3rd. That took place with a favorable outcome, as the committee knows, with support for our next fiscal year operating budget. And soon upon us, item 6.2 will be the Boxborough Town Meeting that will begin on May 8th. In your packet, item 6.3 is a memo to, from Claire, I'm sorry, with the FY17 financial status in the Quarter III, or Q3 report, as she would refer to it. As always, she has provided you as a committee with a really thorough overview and a snapshot of where we are at, respectively, at this point in the year. Just some things to highlight within that document and that memo. First off, revenue-budget projections are, at this point in time and at this juncture by her calculation, favorable by approximately $657,000, plus or minus $30,000. Approximately half of that is from higher state aid, and the other is from unbudgeted revenue sources. We anticipate, Claire has told me, no problem in bringing the expenses in between 0.5 and 1% to budget, based upon the activity that is before our finance department at this point in time. Based upon the projections, we do normally, as we get closer to the end of the year, they get firmer. And just a couple of highlights, under expenditures, you'll note a number of things that are highlighted within there on the second page. As of March 31st, from which this data is coming from, 94.5% of the budgeted expenditures are expended or encumbered. Under salaries, you'll note the projections continue to indicate that we are tracking fine according to budget, and some of that is associated with long-term leaves that may result in some savings on the last three months. Under fringe benefits, health insurance for both retirees and actives are currently favorable to our budget plan, $310,000 and $118,000 respectively. Some of the other items Claire has noted below under fringe benefits, workers' compensation as an example, overbudgeted by $172, as she has shared with the committee previously, and then some of the other variables within fringe benefits. Capital outlay, I'll draw your attention to that briefly, and the overrun of approximately $300,000 is due as a reminder to the committee to primarily the expanded scope of the concrete project at the high school, and she captures the numbers of capital outlay for both what she has called true capital, as well as the departmental outlay budgets. Property and casualty is listed there, not much to note, maintenance buildings and grounds and equipment, spending through the end of March slightly over budget. That is not atypical, and historically, it runs over budget, as she has noted there, and so she is not concerned about that, based upon an historical view of what she has seen in terms of activity within that specific department. Legal services, we have overspent on this, this is certainly, as I think you know as a committee, one of those categories that often is very difficult to project, based upon the volatility of activity that may be happening in any different way, but at the current run rate, she believes that legal fees will be at or near budget. Special education transportation, just to note there, there is some changes within that. $290,000 was budgeted for contract services, you'll see there, and that is up from FY16, but overall favorability as of March, that can change, but as of March, favorability in that. And then some of the other categories that she draws out. So, in total, in summary, she is feeling very good about our picture at this point in time, and as mentioned at the outset, does believe that within 0.5 to 1% of favorable spending, based upon the information that she and members of her department have at this point in time. So, just also to draw to your attention, the backup material from the more detailed financial report is also included. I'm happy to take any questions, and I will try my best to answer them, and if I can't, I will get back to you after I've had a chance to talk with Claire.
Any questions for Glenn? Eileen?
It's not a question, actually, it's just, I would like to know something. Why school choice assessment cost? I mean, how do you calculate that, and what is it? I mean, how do you calculate that, and what, what is it?
So those are, those are the students from, from our district that go to other placements. We have, as does probably every district, have a number of students that are in that school choice category? Right.
Eileen, for example, we may have a student who lives in Acton who goes to school in Littleton, and it's the payment that we make to the Littleton School District to pay their tuition.
So, so some students can go to charter school, and also they can choose any other school?
They can, so it's not our elementary school choice program, it's, like I mentioned, someone from here may go to Littleton High School, and then we pay the town of Littleton. Choice and charter is something Claire talks about all through the budget process, in terms of her estimates and that kind of thing.
Okay, thank you.
If I may, item 6.4, I'll ask JD to come back up for, and that is, there's a memo in your packet regarding the net metering agreement and a status update on that, again, that's item 6.4. JD?
Sure, it's, you know, relatively self-explanatory, but I'm happy to answer any questions whatsoever. I know this was kind of a, a bit of a confusing subject matter about a year ago, when we talked about entering into some of these possible projects, which were off-site solar. At that point, we were, you know, working with Omni, and they had a few projects for us that needed us to enter into agreements on, for us to move those projects forward in the process. Again, those were under what the, the state refers to as SREC 2, which is the, the policy under which the, the solar program is, is administered. And what that does is define the rates and the, and the reimbursements for the private partner, as well as a public partner, or a homeowner, as well, you know, I don't know if, I know Paul has solar on his home, but the, so essentially, none of those projects were permitted under the, by the utility, under the SREC 2. So the, the utility company has always had a very strong interest in moving away from SREC 2, because it wasn't nearly as financially viable for them as other programs could be. The new program is called SMART, S-M-A-R-T, but, so those projects have, have died out, you know, the, those, those agreements are essentially null and void as it is, because Omni would not be able to deliver on them anyway. And so that's, that's where we are with those. And we continue to, to look at other means to try and take advantage of some of these programs. Tomorrow I have a conference call with a, another group like Omni, they're called Altus, and they on, you know, conversely have lost their public partner, right? So they were supposed to do a project with Wilburn, and Wilburn has dropped out for, because they couldn't get a town meeting vote passed, you know, to, to complete the project. So, so these things are still, you know, out there, and we'll certainly come back to you with, with any opportunities.
Okay, so I just want you to know that I understood null and void and town meeting.
And you abstained on this last year.
And I abstained on this vote, because I didn't understand it, but I do have a question. When, so is there a way, and maybe not, when I go to LS, I mean, do their parking lot is also like this, right?
Yeah, the canopy, yup.
And so is that all the solar energy used for the school, for the complex itself?
It depends, they could very well have a Schedule Z, where, you know.
Can you talk in English?
Yeah, yeah. It's, it's very well possible, much like the landfill at the town of Acton, right? So the town of Acton, that solar is generated, and, and the power actually goes to the grid, but the consumption is offset by the town of Acton's utility accounts, right?
So is that something we could think about for this campus?
We have had that, we've had, we had someone come and propose that to us in the past. So one of our main issues, as, you know, kind of, we're going through these building project, you know, scenarios as it is, you know, property is our greatest resource, and probably one of our most scarce resource. We had a company come to us that literally was kind of littering, if you will, and it's awful term, given the sustainability of it, but it, it was, you know, canopies and panels pretty much anywhere you can see on our campus. And then once they're there, it's a 20-year fixed asset, you know, so you don't have any kind of mobility if you're gonna change a parking lot or anything of that nature. So, you know, we just kind of felt like this was a better option for us at the time, as opposed to on-site solar, off-site solar was better, you know, if we could make some revenue and have someone else host it, then, then why not? But I'm, I'm sure we'll be pursuing that in any kind of building projects we do moving forward.
I'll just say, we just got a $500 check for our SREC.
Hey! SREC 2.
Very pleased. But it, some of the states, the states kind of filled with some of their solar, right?
That's, that's exactly it.
The benefits aren't as good now.
There was a mad rush to, to fill the capacity in, in our NEMA load zone, if you will.
JD, I was just gonna wish you luck finding us some new agreements, because I think we really tortured you last year with trying to educate us on what these things really are, and now that we all understand it, maybe except for Maria, who's leaving. But I, I would hesitate before we do any of those canopy things. I, I think they're really ugly, and so I like the off-site idea more, personally.
Thank you.
Thank you, JD. Kindergarten registration update, Marie.
Okay, so now that you've heard from a couple of engineers about all kinds of acronym-type things, I'm going to kindergarten here, so we should be good. So I did not do a presentation, I did the memo, and I will give you a couple of highlights. So I did do a presentation last time, so you saw a lot of the numbers, we held the lottery, and again, to reiterate what I said last time, we are over projection quite significantly at kindergarten in both towns. And at least the second year in a row, the year before that, we were over in one town by a lot, and under in the other town by a lot. So, but now, last year we were over by 44 kids, this year we're over by 42 on this list, with more to come. In fact, we have five more than are in these numbers, registered at the moment. So we're at 340 right now, based on a projection of 298. So maybe those are in these numbers, anyway. So, we have a couple of, of suggestions for you. So you can see how the lottery played out and where the waitlists are, we have waitlists at three schools, and then we have relatively small waitlist for all-day K in several of the schools. Those waitlists will ebb and flow as we go along, as new kids enroll, and so on. The demographic distribution, I included by school and by race, it's a little more disparate than it's been in the past. We've always had sort of one or two schools that had a higher population of a particular one thing or another, but in this case, what kind of surprised me was that several of the schools, it was just so different between schools. And so in particular, our Asian-American families are by and large picking Gates and Conant at 60 and 70%, and Blanchard's at 26%. What we used to see was really three or four of our schools between 25 and 35%, and instead, we have, you know, three schools under 20%, under 15%. So that's a little bit different. So we're gonna continue to watch that and talk about it, we're not sure exactly what, what can or should be done about it. The English Learners is another place where we're watching closely, and we're going to screen for the first time in the spring. We've always screened late summer, early fall, we're going to screen late May in all the schools, but we're anticipating large EL numbers at Gates and Conant, based on the numbers we know we need to screen. So we're watching that. And then the other thing is, due to the large enrollment, we did, we had budgeted for one extra classroom, we used that classroom at Blanchard. And so the last page is, the first time you've sort of been able to look at it visually this way, this is all of next year's K through six. So these are next year's enrollments, not counting the new kids who are to be placed. So over on the right, current total is how many kids we have at each grade level that are in our schools now, or that are kindergarteners that we know about. But then to the right of that, we're showing you how many more we anticipate, and the average class sizes are based on including how many more we anticipate. So, like I said, we've watched it closely, and we're actually, we brought this to Budget Subcommittee when you met last week, and you asked us to seriously think about whether or not we should add another kindergarten on the Acton side. Our kindergartens already have 21, in almost two-thirds of them, and 20 in the rest, and like I said, we have six more kids to place already. So we brought this to our leadership team with all the principals, and we are actually thinking that we should probably add another kindergarten. We know between K and one, we get another 25 to 30 kids, so if we don't add it now, we're gonna have to add it the next year anyway, and it's gonna be, it's just easier to distribute the kids the sooner you do it. When we add a kindergarten, whether it will be a half-day or a full day, we pay for a half-day. So the expense would be $33,000, is what we're anticipating for salary, plus the potential of a benefits, health insurance, which would be $8,000 if it's individual, or $19,000 if it's family. A lot of our half-day K teachers are either individual, or they're not subscribing. We have in the budget $80,000 in salaries that's not allocated yet, so there is some money. Our concerns are around the kindergarten, the potential that ELL is so much higher that we might need to add some more in the ELL realm, we'll know more in a month or so, after we do the screening. But at a minimum, we think we could do this kindergarten, we know the all-day K balance is in a healthy place, and in terms of space, it is an issue. At the moment, we think the best location will probably be McCarthy Town, but we're gonna work on that to be sure, before we make a final decision. Possibly Marion, but the other schools do not have an option for space. So we want your feedback about that, and any questions that you have.
Feedback as far as adding another, I mean, and I think the numbers speak for themselves, I don't know, you know, if you're expecting, what are you gonna do? I mean, you know, there's a little bit of, it is what it is, and, and we've got to make sure that these kids are in, you know, classrooms that are manageable, I mean, they're kindergartners, right? So if you get another 20 of them, and you've already kind of oversubscribed in a couple of the classrooms, that's a lot of kids in, in our classrooms, I think you have to.
I think we want to maintain our class size guidelines, or at least try a little harder to, I think we need to add that. I just would recommend, if it is in the Parker Damon Building, that it's not in the multipurpose room.
Looking at the waitlist, what would it take to add it to Blanchard? So I'm just saying, there are, there are already eight, there, I mean, there are eight students waiting for Blanchard and eight for Douglas, and I know Douglas is not possible.
So we could, so Blanchard actually is very tight on space now, we've added quite a bit there. But if we added it to Blanchard, it would not fix the problem, because, yes, we could move those eight kids over, but it's Acton that has the 21s. So I have right now 10 available seats at Blanchard, and we're hoping to move some of the Acton kids who want to go to Blanchard over, but I'm not doing it until we get closer to school, because we know we have to move Boxborough kids in when they want it. So if we added one more class to Blanchard, we could move eight kids from Acton, but you're, you're still gonna end up with 21s and 22s in Acton if you do that.
See, I am so regionalized, I just think of this all as one big community, I wasn't even thinking about hometown guarantee or anything like that, so that's, that's where I am.
Good for you. Bridget?
I think you have to do it.
Okay.
We're gonna have the kids there, so we might as well have some.
So just to respond to Christina's concern, we would try to do it without doing the multipurpose room, we have a couple of possible options that would not be the multipurpose room, so that's, we, we need a little time to work that out.
I'd like to comment that I think it's fabulous you're gonna do the ELL screening in May, just to plan, you know, we heard how challenging it was at the end of the summer last year, not that that was a district issue, or administration issue, but still, the more you can plan, the better. One question we had at BLF the other night was, we mentioned that we were adding the fourth classroom at Blanchard, and then I think they'd ask for this new one. Are these going to be new teachers to the district, or with other staffing arrangements that have happened, would it be moving of current staff?
So we're actually adding three classrooms to Blanchard next year. One is a kindergarten, one is the multi-age 1-2, is turning into a straight second and a straight third, and a pathways classroom. So when people say, wait, Blanchard had all this room, we have filled it right up, and there will be three sections at every grade, except for one grade, which is coming through with two, it's gonna be fourth or fifth grade next year. And then there will be four classrooms at kindergarten next year. So anyway, long story short, we are, the teachers who will go into those classrooms are teachers who are in the district, who are otherwise being bumped from their school. So it's a, it's a good thing.
Yeah, that's what we thought, but I wanted to make sure we gave the right answer. Thank you. All right, thank you, Marie. MCAS 2017 Student Questionnaire, look at Deb queued up already, great. Just looking for a clicker. Great, good evening, thank you for the time to share with you that for this year's MCAS 2.0, the Department of Ed has included a new student questionnaire, and so tonight I want to provide you with some information, so you can provide us with some guidance. The questionnaire for MCAS is not entirely new, for the past 15 years, as part of the grade eight and grade 10 administration, students were answering questions about their technology use in the classroom, about their perceptions of their core classroom instruction, and also about their after-graduation plans. This year, the Department of Ed has, as one of their strategic priorities, social emotional learning, and we think that's a good step for them to recognize how important that is in a child's education. So what they are doing this year is they're piloting some questions related to school climate, so they can begin to gather some mechanism to gather that data. So students will be responding to questions related to three sub-questions, three sub-dimensions, one's engagement, safety, and the other's the environment, and you can see the other nine indicators, all related to school climate. Grade eight and 10 students will also have questions about their experiences using a computer in school. Grade eight will also have questions about their time spent on homework, and grade 10 will include questions on their plans after high school, as well as their instructional practices, the instructional practices in their mathematics classes. The grade five questionnaire will only include those school climate questions. The administration of these questionnaires take place for grades five and grade eight right after their science, technology, and engineering test. So you can see the dates, they all take place next month for grades five and eight, and then for grade 10, it takes place right after the mathematics test, which is May 16th and May 17th. So Desi polled questions from three different sources, from the Ed School Climate surveys, that's the U.S. Department of Education, from the PISA, and also their own model students' feedback surveys that they've had in the past. They took feedback from 150 students from six different councils, NASA students who reviewed the questions and revised them, then they piloted all the questionnaires with grade five students to make sure that it was, there had readability and appropriateness of questions, and then they solicited some feedback from Mass Advocates for Children, and the I did forward them to the principals in case we had parents who wanted to view the questionnaires ahead of time. I did bring them tonight and I wanted to share them with you so that you could get a sense of the kinds of questions that are on the survey. Okay. So Grades Five, Eight, and 10 are included there in each packet. That's going around both ways. The number of questions increases with the grades. You can see Grade Five has 24 questions, Grade Eight 37 questions, and Grade 10 38 questions. Students will respond in their answer booklets. Their answers do not affect their MCAS scores and the Department of Ed predicts it'll take about 10 to 15 minutes to complete. Across the three questionnaires, they are trying out 71 school climate questions in So this is what we currently know about the data use. Schools and districts will receive an aggregate summary along with statewide comparisons. And of course, anything that has fewer than six responses will not be reported. Schools and district results will not be posted on their webpage, only the state's overall results. And that they will conduct some rigorous psychometric analysis and validity studies, as well as some research to see if students' perceptions of their school climate are, and how those are related to achievement, attendance, and their outcomes. So at the Superintendent's Advisory Council meeting on March 30th, the superintendents had some questions and some concerns about the survey. And these are some of their concerns and their questions. They wanted to know what the intent was of the survey. It's now being discussed as being a possible indicator for accountability, as you know, with ESSA, the Every Student Succeeds Act. Massachusetts can create what they consider important for the accountability measures. But what they haven't yet articulated for the superintendents is how the data will actually be used as an indicator. So there's some concern about that. There's also a concern about the future use of the data. Will it eventually be used to compare districts? This year, they're saying they're not posting individual district data on their website, but we don't know what the future holds. And they have not articulated that either. And then there's still some questions about the validity, even though they're doing the analysis, there really is some concern about can they really measure this with student feedback in this way. In the Massachusetts FAQ, that's on their website, it states that after reviewing the questions, a district or school may choose to not administer the questionnaires based on the local policies for surveys. We don't have a policy for engaging students with surveys, so it's one of the reasons why I'm bringing this to you tonight, because I want to make sure that you're well aware of it. And I would love for you to give us some guidance as to what to do. So you can choose not to have the entire district participate in the survey, in the questionnaires. We can leave it to individual schools. I can work with the principals to see how they think about using the questionnaire. Ultimately, student participation is voluntary, so we could also inform parents and students that they have the choice. There's a bit of a management issue there. We have 500 students at Grade Eight and 500 students at Grade 10 and to keep track of who can and who can't participate. We also have, of course, once the test is ending, we'd have some students taking the survey and some not. And so it just gets a little bit tricky at the end of a test. So I welcome your thinking around this. I know at short notice in terms of taking a vote, it was the end of March that we had this information and we didn't have an April meeting. So I welcome your thoughts. I'm also very happy to share my thinking with you if you'd like. Thanks. Bridgette?
Okay. I didn't look at any of the questions yet, but my view on standardized tests generally is that way too much, way too often, too much time spent on it. We're not sure how this data is going to be used. We don't know where it's going to be posted in the future. If it's optional, why are we going to make our kids sit for another 10 to 15 minutes if that's what it would take to take a test where we don't know, or a survey, survey? We don't know where the data is going to go. We don't know what it's going to be used for. We're not sure it's valid. I opt out.
I completely agree. And especially, you just got this information in March and now we have to vote on it. I mean, this is, this is just exactly the kind of, I have no faith in what they're going to decide to use this data with, use, how they're going to use this data in the future. So I would definitely say opt out.
Christina?
I just quickly looked at just the Grade Five questions because I have a fifth grader. I'm really concerned actually that they're asking these questions right after they take an MCAS test. I mean, honestly, it says, think of the last 30 days in school, but the kids are not going to be thinking of the last 30 days. They're going to be thinking of how they feel right now after taking a test that might have been stressful for them. And they have to answer a question like, I am happy to be at our school. I just think that's setting us up for failure and I don't think it's fair to the kids or to us as a district.
And I agree with all three of them. I'm going to be short.
Anytime I hear the word psychometric.
That was a quote from their website too, so just so you know, I, yeah. And I make sure I'll never use that one.
So just, not pertaining to the, not pertaining to this agenda item, but certainly in a very different venue, you will be hearing more about culture and climate. You might recall that the Wellness Committee this year, who will be before you at your next meeting, May 18th, will be presenting some recommendations around some different tools that they're proposing, that the administration will look at further to possibly implement. Has nothing to do with Department of Education, has nothing to do with standardized testing, but more in line with trying to gather a 360-degree holistic view of, you know, the culture and climate of our school communities to help as it relates to teaching and learning and connectedness and so on. So very different than this indeed, and certainly no obligation to pursue any one tool. But the high school right now, you might know the Climate of Care, they are engaged and have been for some time in connecting, collecting some data, but again, that's not connected to any kind of standardized test or any direction specifically from the Department of Education.
I'm going to add, the reason I wanted Glenn to say that is, that's our data that we can use to look at our school, our classrooms, our students. And if they're not even, are they even going to give us back our raw data or is it, it's just going to be aggregate data? We can't do anything with that. And so, you know, for a lot of reasons, I also am not in support of this. Eileen, you had a comment.
Oh, I just, I just read those, I think the intention they're trying to put there is very nice.
Yep.
Yeah. And the question's not necessarily bad. If they really want this, can we separate with the, you know, the test? Maybe do, let the kids do it at home or whatever?
So it wouldn't be for the state's results. I mean, we can't, we can't give them this questionnaire outside of that testing environment because they're answering the questions in their test booklet. That would then have to go to the state. So, I mean, is it something where, as we're looking at creating our own climate surveys, might we want to look to see some of those questions that we think might be great to incorporate into those kinds of questionnaires? Absolutely. And then we can administer that questionnaire when we think is a good time to do so. But we wouldn't be able to do it outside that testing environment.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, and I would echo that. I think these kinds of surveys can be very valuable and some of the people involved, the Committee on Trauma or whatever, they're doing amazing things. But I just don't think connected to the MCAS, I agree, who's going to, what kid's going to give a positive rating right after they finish the MCAS? And they just want to get out. So I think I have a sense. You want to vote? Well, I think I have a sense. I mean, I don't think you need to official vote, but I think we have a very good sense of how you feel around this. I mean, if you, it's really your call whether or not you want to do an official vote so I can say or. Sure. Why don't we take a formal vote? Thank you.
We don't have a motion.
I know, I don't have a motion read. I view to, yeah, I move to decline participating in the climate survey after the MCAS.
So Amy seconded that. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay. Thank you, Deb. Can I just add a couple more things? So I just wanted to share with you that I and all the principals are very pleased with your response and we will go forward with that. And so our next steps will be that I'll compose an email that will go out to all fifth grade, eighth grade, and 10th grade parents to let them know that their students will not be participating in this questionnaire, as well as letting all of our principals, assistant principals, and anyone else connected with administering the MCAS, so everyone's aware of that during the testing day. Okay? Right. Thank you. Master Plan update.
Sure. Thank you. Number of different items under, under item number nine, Master Plan Update, we'll try and work through them. And I say we, J.D., Mary, and Christina, and myself. There has been a lot of activity in, certainly in many different ways, connected to our ongoing work related to the master plan. You'll hear more about that. And certainly as it relates to MSBA. This will continue to be an ever-present item, certainly for the foreseeable future on the agenda items. Item 9.1.1, I'll bring to your attention, we'll start with that. And that is the initial compliance certification. As part of, as a reminder, as part of being invited into the MSBA eligibility period, we have a number of deliverables as a school district that we have to produce and present to the MSBA. This represents truly the first one, outside of the statement of interest, of course. And that's called, again, the initial compliance certification. The full document you've seen before, it is, it is before you here. And it is here for your action and vote to authorize the Chair of the School Committee, as well as myself as the superintendent, to sign this document. And we are obligated, because of our timeline, to respectively turn this document in signed by May the 3rd. So that's coming up quickly. And so that's why it's here ultimately for you this evening. This, this compliance certification, it must be completed by all eligible applicants who have submitted a statement of interest to the MSBA and who have been invited into the eligibility period. As you hopefully have had a chance, it's a lengthy document for sure. There are 37 items to which the district agrees or has to commit to being in compliance with. And in many respects, most of these, all of these certainly fall to the administration to monitor and ensure that we're in compliance with. That's not the case for all of them, but the majority of them, of course, as well. So J.D. or I are happy to take any questions if you have on the certification. He has been in contact with MSBA on this, on this document and so certainly can provide any further insight if you have any questions. If you don't, again, just to reiterate, looking for your vote to authorize the Chair, Mary, and myself to sign the document. I know you, it seems like it's more boilerplate, but when I just went through it, there was, item one talks about compliance with all provisions. It just seems kind of broad and I'm just wondering if this is something that we need a study or an audit to make sure that we can check off in confidence that we're in compliance with all provisions? On item six, is there a formula for Chapter 70B maintenance expectations? Where do we stand on that?
I can answer that one. There is a formula. Essentially, you need to, of your appropriated, there's DESI categories for line items with regards to maintenance and with your facilities. If we were to allocate $2 million into those line items, we have to show that we've spent at least 50% of those, right? So using that round number would be a million dollars and we're in no danger there.
Okay. Item seven seems to relate to negligence and my understanding is that the district has done a fairly good job of maintaining the assets, but who's the judge of that?
The MSBA.
Is there any risk there? I mean, could they come and tell us that we haven't been doing a good job maintaining the facility?
I don't, I don't think there is any risk there at all. I mean, we've, we've worked with them, you know, similarly with the high school. I don't think we have any exposure and we certainly, you know, budget a very reasonable amount for our maintenance and our capital planning and we certainly expend that money as well.
Okay. Item 21, this provision has a signing off that we've read 963 CMR 203 and comply. Is that to the school committee or to the administration? Because I got to start reading if this is something I got to sign.
You go ahead.
No, go ahead.
Yeah. Yeah. You know, Googling that, that's a 38-page 963 CMR. Essentially, it's a, it's a stewardship. It's, you know, I would liken it to the responsibility that, as the committee or administrators take on with regards to expending any public resources, you know, our appropriated budget, et cetera. So really, it just talks about ethics and, and that responsibility, fiduciary responsibility.
It's somewhat similar, I would say, to 70B, Chapter 70B, back to item number one, that the district will be in compliance with the provisions of MGL 70B. And so there are lots of different statutes that are obviously incorporated into the compliance here. And as it, as it pertains to the district's activity moving forward in the process, we need to make sure, as well as, once we get to the point of partnering with an OPM or such, that they're also making sure that we're in compliance as a, as an entity with these different aspects. If I may, and that's, that's fine. I really, is this something we need to read or it's all covered? I don't need to worry about it? Just tell me I don't need to worry about it. You don't need to worry about it. The district, the administration will worry about that. Okay. Item 29, I thought we already did a feasibility study or is this a separate task?
It's a separate task. One of the requirements of going through this process is the MSBA will do their own very extensive feasibility study with regards to our project. So it is great that we have it, you know, it certainly is, it makes the job a lot easier. And that timeframe that some districts might spend on that item might be longer than what we will spend, but, but MSBA requires a full feasibility. And it'll be, that'll be something that we do with our designer selection in that, in that process.
So we need a vote to, for me to sign that. Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you.
If I may, just to clarify, on this document and other documents, you will continue to see the Chief Executive Officer. We have talked with the MSBA about that. And in our particular case, in the regional setting, it is generally the case that the Superintendent of Schools also serves as the Chief Executive Officer. That will be, that would be different in a municipality setting where there might be someone at the town level who would serve as the CEO. But in our particular case, so I will sign twice in those two, in those two spots. So thank you for your support for that. We will sign that and get that off. And that really is a big milestone, step number one in the eligibility period. So 9.1.2, just very quickly, in your packet are copies of the statement of interest for Conant and Gates. You previously, of course, authorized, authorized us to submit those and those are copies, the final copies for, just for the record officially. Item 9.1.3, there has been, again, as mentioned, a lot of activity with MSBA as it relates to our participation. That will continue. There are two documents actually, and I'll let J.D. speak to those. One of those are handed out and they're at your table. Their other is actually a document, 9.1.3, similar but two different versions of the same information. And so J.D.?
Yeah, sure. You just crossed one milestone. That's the initial compliance certificate. If you take a look at this graphic that we put together, that's, it's just a simple layout of what our next steps are in the immediate future, kind of going into March, May of 2018. I put that over top of the kind of original Dorn Video Timeline Arrow that they presented about a year ago during their. about a year ago during their findings, just to kind of give you an idea of where we are, it's pretty much kind of right on track with what they had originally said and where we would be. So the initial compliance certificate, you guys just took care of, the school building committee, we made some headway, I don't know if that's later on the agenda or not, sorry. So that would be, that's the deadline for June 2nd, educational profile on the 3rd of July, enrollment projection 3rd of July, and then the executed enrollment certification. So the two boxes in orange are items that the district and MSBA will do together collaboratively. The items in light blue are our responsibility, and the lighter beige color are just things that the MSBA does alone. So in October, we'll be working with the MSBA to really do an in-depth look and decide collaboratively on our enrollment number going forward for this project. And also in October, we'll, or I will have to submit a maintenance and capital information, and then we're on to the town votes, which I believe is the next item, special town meetings.
We should keep going, you just hit it.
December 4th, everybody, I got that date right, right?
You do, special town meetings have been set in Acton and Boxborough on December the 4th. Thank you, JD.
Wonderful.
Okay, that brings us to the district, oh, sorry, Paul, please.
Just wondering, questionnaire, I'm just wondering if we can send the NCAT survey.
Okay, district master plan review committee, we've been very active, I think we've conducted eight forums so far. Christina did a lovely recording with Acton TV, so it's available online. We have, I haven't looked in over a week, but when I looked last week, we had twenty-seven responses to the survey through the online, and we have, I think, at least eighty now from the forum. And we have two forums planned for this weekend, there'll be one Sunday afternoon from two to three-thirty here, and one Sunday evening from seven to eight-thirty at the Sergeant Memorial Library in Boxborough. So don't miss the fun. Do you want to mention the frequently asked questions, Christina?
I do, in fact, I also want to mention to school committee members who haven't been to a forum yet, I'd really like to encourage you to try to go to one on Sunday. It's not only, I think, going to be helpful for you to hear the detailed options as we're presenting them, but to hear the questions that people are asking us, because pretty soon, the DMPRC is going to come to this committee with recommendations. So I don't, at that time, think that our committee should have a lot of questions about the options and that kind of thing. So if you can make it to one on Sunday, great, if you can't, you can watch the online one as well. And in our packet is a really long document now, which is frequently asked questions, sort of all the major questions we've been getting throughout these forums. I'd love if everyone can really familiarize yourselves with those answers, they're really going to be our talking points moving forward. These are questions that people are going to be asking you, and I think we all need to have the same answers. So I think that's it.
Great, and why don't you move into the school building committee?
Sure. So a group of us met last week during vacation week to start to talk about-
Oh, sorry, Eileen. Yeah?
So Christina, Sunday afternoon, the whole building almost used by Chinese school. So two-two, three-thirty, it's the major time everyone is in classroom.
Well, we planned it, we planned it with Shuan, so that it was a time that would be accessible to the parents who are coming here, so that students, they could drop off their students and come here and spend the time with us here. So it was deliberate to do it in that time slot with them.
Okay, but, see, I'm here, but I'm teaching in the classroom, so I hope the time can extend a little bit after three-thirty, some, a lot of, some other parents will be available.
What I would say is, the format of these is, the first thirty minutes is the presentation, and then we typically have thirty or forty-five minutes of questions, and then we solicit feedback. So coming in at the end isn't going to be helpful, but we're having one Sunday night at the Sergeant Memorial Library from seven to eight-thirty as well. But the intent was to do it here, so there, if there were people participating in the Chinese language school who wanted to attend, they could, and we could also open it up to the broader community.
Okay.
Okay, moving on to item nine point three. Last week, a group of us, which was JD, Mary, Amy, Marie, and I, met to talk about the formation of our school building committee. We need to form that committee by June 2nd of this year, according to the guidelines that MSBA has given us, and they're very specific in terms of the makeup of the committee and the type of background and expertise that's required to be represented on that committee. So what we did is, we took their grid of what they expect, and we started filling in who we had already, and who has expressed interest, and other people who we thought of in the community who might be a good resource for us. So we have a fairly full slate right now. You can see the different people, the different roles that they will play on the committee, and we have a few who have invitations extended, who are still considering if they can commit to that or not. In addition to this list, I did get another confirmation of a gentleman named Rob Bukowski. He's an engineer, and he's going to join the building committee as well, assuming that the school committee approves the makeup of this list. So I expect to get a few more confirmations in the next week, and bring this back to the group for a vote on May eighteenth. Paul?
So we're still looking for an architect or engineer?
We have invitations out to both of those people. I think the only area that we don't have covered is a real sort of construction person, but that's also something we could add when we get to that point.
Great.
Great.
Thank you.
Please share them. Okay, any questions? Okay. Thank you in advance to everyone who has agreed to serve on the building committee. I think it potentially is a really long-term commitment, but I think for a very good cause, and I've agreed to chair that committee, so I'm on there as well, thank you.
So just to reiterate, we are going to ask the committee to vote this list at our next meeting, and so we'll share the TBD names with you, we'll have them by then, but we wanted to get this to you now, so that you at least had that to look at. All right, that's everything on the school building and master plan. Subcommittee reports, Maria, budget.
The committee met April 5th, I think it was the last time we met. We reviewed FY seventeen and eighteen budget statuses, ALG, BLF. We talked about, you know, town meetings and going forward with that. We also had a presentation from Doran Whittier on the bucket list, which is a great presentation. Is that online?
Yes, it's been uploaded.
That has been uploaded, okay, so that's online, and I would suggest, you know, if you want some bedtime reading, actually, they did a really nice job breaking everything down, so they made a presentation, and that was about it.
Good, thank you. Policy, mission, vision, values, Bridget.
So this is the second read, and this policy had been updated to incorporate the mission and vision and values from our long-range strategic plan. We have not gotten any further comments on this.
Does anyone have any question or comments for Bridget on this? Can I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
That was Katie, you seconded. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay. Policy on memorials, Dawn.
Yeah, actually, I'd actually like to reverse them, because I think it'll make some sense to look at ten point two point three first, which is the naming district facilities. This was a fairly easy cleanup and really served to remove the references to memorials, since we're proposing a new policy for that. It cleaned up language in a few places, such as, and the free enterprise system, since none of us on the policy subcommittee knew what that meant. And again, it cross-references the new memorial policy, and then the title is really the large change in the actual, the procedure piece, which I know you don't vote on, but to keep it consistent with naming district facilities versus school facilities specifically. So not a ton of huge substantive changes to this particular policy.
Any questions or comments for Dawn on this? It's a first read, so we'll vote it next time. If you do have any comments, concerns, if you could send them to Dawn and Bridget, that would be great. To the next one?
Thanks, the next one is ten point two point two, and it's memorials. This was a new policy board from, really, a number of requests around memorials and memorial activities in recent months, so, and actually, since putting this in the packet, we've received some additional feedback, and so I have a small tweet to take back to policy again before we meet. But I also wanted to note that there's a typo in here, that the first sentence in the second paragraph should have a period after person, and the words "and includes" should not be there. So it goes from "remind people of a deceased person," period, and then new sentences, "memorials include but are not limited to," so there is a piece that did not get taken out. And I don't know if any of the folks on the policy subcommittee wanted to share any additional information about this particular policy.
Any questions, comments? Okay, same thing here, first read, we'll vote next meeting, comments to Dawn and Bridget.
So just to be, we have a meeting next Wednesday, and then I think that's it, so if the comments are going to be, if you can get the comments to us by next Wednesday, because I don't, you know, before the next meeting.
Right, I see, right, right. When she said "we," she meant policy subcommittee.
Sorry, I meant policy subcommittee.
My brain wasn't quite there at first, but yes, okay, thank you. Yeah.
I apologize if I missed it, but a question on the naming district facilities question, I do wonder, in the example of, say, the Douglas School, there's a Douglas family in Acton who, that school was named after their grandmother, and there are six kids that just went through it, and I wonder, what if we close that school, knock it down? Is there any, have we dealt with this before? Have we had to take a named building out of commission? And do we need to address that in this policy?
There is a policy. Yeah, is it in this one, or is it a separate policy?
Do we combine it? About, where is it? Yeah, school committee, I don't know where it went now. Yeah. What do you, no, that's what I was thinking of.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking of as well.
I feel like revoking the name of a facility would be like if we changed Parker Damon to, you know, Beth Peder, which actually is a great idea.
There you go.
Whereas, you know, if you close a school named after C.T. Douglas, is that something you would want to continue somewhere else? Is there an obligation to continue somewhere else? Maybe we just have to deal with it when we deal with it, but if we know we're going to have to deal with it, maybe we need to work it into this policy.
Bridget?
So I was going to ask a question with the Parker Damon Building, and you've got two schools there, right?
So that's, actually, I was going to talk about that. So we had the McCarthy Town School and the Marion School, and then we named the building, the Parker Damon Building. We literally tore down the town wing of the old McCarthy, no, the other way, we tore down the McCarthy wing of the old McCarthy Town, and now the town building stands. I think it would be addressed, Christina, in that you would be also opening a new school, and you would be naming that school, so the committee would have then the choice of, sort of, whether to carry the name into the new building or not. I don't know that there needs to be a separate paragraph that says that if the building is demolished, what will happen, I don't know. Like, what do you anticipate?
But, you know, in some of our models, we go from six programs to four, five, and so there's potential for a name to be-
So part of the process of deciding what goes into the new building is going to include how you name it, and it might be a hyphenated name, or it might be a new name, or, but I think the committee at that time will have to make that decision.
And so we just want to make sure this policy provides the freedom to do that, because it very well may come up. Yeah, okay.
Yeah, and I would suggest that, like, even if we think that that's something that we have to elaborate more on with the policy, it would still be great to get a vote on this, because we now have a memorial policy, and so that cleans this up for that purpose right now, and then we can add that to the agenda for the policy going forward.
Thank you. So that takes us to a sustainability policy. Bridget?
So this is a new policy, which came out of the lovely presentation we had on water, and so we talked about a sustainability policy that was a little more broad, but that could encompass the notion of using local resources, including local water. So please take a look at this, see if you like the flavor of it and the notions in it, and give us feedback. This is a first read again, and I think a lot of the notions in here about conservation, high-performance buildings, et cetera, we're already, due to JD's work and his group's work, we're a long way, we've done a lot already on this, but this really memorializes what we think the district stands for in terms of those things.
Yeah, I just wanted to comment that its track changed, so it looks like it's an old policy being revised, but it's not, right? I think people drafted something and it never-
It was a first draft that we marked up, so that's why the changes are marked, but it's a new policy.
So just so folks understand that.
Yep.
Any questions or other comments on this? Okay, same drill with first read, comments to Bridget.
And then the next one is the student activity accounts, and this, Claire was involved in this, and some of the, this is a policy we already had, some of the changes that you'll see marked on this are in connection with audit comments, and cleaning it up in terms of the way the statute is written and what our procedures need to be in light of that. So I think it tightens up a lot of the requirements that we already had, and again, deals with some audit questions that we had, and we do get our accounts audited once every three years, they rotate, the auditors rotate them.
And any questions here? Okay, so feedback to Bridget, and I would just say, I remember at our last meeting, us just adding policy after policy for you guys to look at, and you've done a great job, again, thank you. Outreach, Christina.
So we have not met, I think, in a couple of months now, because we've been focusing such outreach efforts on the building project, but I did convene with the group just by email to say, we have a lot of important issues that we are probably going to want to promote to the public coming up this, the rest of the school year, presentations happening to this committee on start times, elementary funding, the DMPRC recommendation. So I'll just need to be in touch with Glenn and Mary, if you know when those presentations will happen, to share it with me, so we can let people know that they're coming up. I think we'll probably just communicate those issues via our monthly updates.
Great, thank you. School committee member reports, Acton Leadership Group, Amy.
We have not met, and I can also report on the FINCOM, they have not met since town meeting, and their next meeting is this coming Tuesday, and that's when they'll kind of restart their next year, I guess.
Foxborough Leadership Forum, we met on Tuesday this week, we went through the warrant preparing for town meeting, and talked about issues there, and then had a, just updates from all the committees, which were pretty brief. Is there anyone here who thinks they will not be at Foxborough Town Meeting on May 8th? I'm making sure they set up a table that's big enough for all of us. I'm making sure they set up a table that's big enough for all of us. Okay. If anyone, if people, if you're not going to be attending, let Beth know so that I can confirm the feeding. That would be great. Health Insurance Trust, we met this morning. We reviewed the financials. It's looking very strong. The cash flow is positive this year. It was part of what influenced our decision about no increases for next year. We, each year, we have to vote a proposal to go out for a stop gas, a stop-loss policy. So that's for people who are covered who may have very high expenses. And so we're insured against that. And so we voted the policy, the RFP, and that will go out, and we'll get that in June to review. That's it there. You did Finance Committee, Acton Board of Selectmen, Eileen, anything there?
It has been a while. I think we all went to town meeting, and most important thing happened there. And Board of Selectmen got election, new members, right? And I really missed this Monday's meeting because the email has tired up, and it's, and I try to look at, I, but I don't think there, I look at the agenda, not a very important thing for us to be aware of it. However, I find this, this paper, and it said Weston, West Acton Sewer Action Advisory Committee. And I think I did report that in our meeting. They're talk, in the meeting, they talked about that probably around three months before I can remember clearly. But I never think about, we need to have any representative from our school. You know, I don't know, I didn't hear any information from there about this. And so maybe this is a separate agenda or separate things to talk about.
Well, we can talk about it here, I think that's good. It just recently came to Beth, to- Right?
Sure.
So they're asking us to appoint a representative. They are looking at the feasibility of sewerin' for property owners in West Acton. And so they have seven, I think, representatives that they want, on the full members and two associate members. So if anybody would like to volunteer for this, that would be great. They would like to have this in place by May 22nd. So we could wait until May 18th, but if anyone knows now that they would like to do this, that would be great.
I have a question. What means the representation from Acton, Foxborough, Bridget's school?
So that means that one of us would be on the committee. Right, right, we're property owners, so.
But it's like our, the school committee member?
Yes, the school committee member who sits as a member of this committee.
Okay, I see. Okay, thank you.
So I just wanted to say that I didn't go to the Board of Selectmen meeting, but I know that they have a new chairperson, Janet Adachi, and vice, the vice chair is Katie Green. Am I correct, Katie? All right, good. And if there's anything else that you have, I guess. Oh, right.
So Glenn just said J.D. would be interested in serving on this. I would be very interested in Glenn, in J.D. serving for us, if, I don't know how others feel about that.
I agree. I was, I was going to say, this person should really be on our building committee, whoever's this representative. And that's because talking to other people about the formation of this, that's a main, either concern or opportunity, depending on how it plays out. But it's definitely going to be important. I think that that person is really up to speed on the building project. So J.D. sounds like a great person to me. One thing Katie did say that was hard to hear, there's a new Board of Selectmen enacted, Joan Gardner. She did come to one of our building forums and sat right in the front row. That was great, so she's all up to speed.
Excellent. Good training already, okay. Thank you for raising that, Eileen. The Foxborough Finance Committee, I don't have anything from them. Board of Selectmen?
I've been to the last two meetings. Jamie and Jen were both at those meetings, and were talking about their budget. And I know that passed, and I don't have the numbers, but it passed a little bit higher than the governor's budget. And really, that was that, and they talked about 111, which is a big sticking point for the Board of Selectmen.
The paving of it?
The paving of it. And I guess the one thing that does possibly pertain to the schools is they're starting in Harvard and working their way down. I don't know why, but, well, the culverts that are in front of Blanchard are a problem, so they've got, they're going to be working on that. So there is some concern that they may not do it in August, which would be really convenient for the school. And they may start in September. So we just need to sort of be aware of that. And we've just asked that, and they're also going to be paving part of Hill Road or a different street. I don't know exactly. So I'm not completely up to speed on the Board of Selectmen stuff yet.
Come on!
But I did say that we just need to make sure we stay in touch with J.D. so that he's aware of what's going on in 111, if there's paving, especially if they're doing a culvert project and it's not just paving.
Exactly. We had talked about a monthly Hagerwell touch base, so now I think that just needs to expand paving, just so that we can be prepared. So that when 111 gets paved, it's the state who does it. So I don't think we have much control over when and the timing and all that. But to the extent we at least are ready, and if we have to, you know, take an alternate route or something, so just to stay connected to that. Okay. And Act, Minuteman Tech, does anyone know of any updates without Dawn here? Okay. Acton Capital Improvement Plan, and Christina?
We have not met.
So that takes us to the annual superintendent's evaluation process. The materials are in here for your review. There's a timetable here, and you can read through it. But basically, we had, in February of 16, Glenn presented his interim report, so that's information to feed into your review. On April 27th, which is today, we're getting all these materials. On May 18th, Glenn will provide a report on the status of the current year goals. June 1st, any completed evaluations get returned to me, the outgoing chairperson. And then I will draft a summary from that. Through this process, we're soliciting public input, and so that's received for June. It's brought into a draft evaluation by June 9th. And on June 16th, it is shared, let's see, it's finalized by me and goes out to the school committee for a June 22nd meeting, where we would share the evaluation and we vote on it. So that's the timeline. The other materials, there's the Massachusetts Model System for Educator Evaluation. There's a web link there for information. The Appendix A has a superintendent rubric, and Appendix B has the End of Cycle Summit of Evaluation Report for the superintendent. So that, we will get that populated with Dr. Brand's goals in there and his information. In your packet, there was a really nice presentation that I believe Marie did for us a couple of years ago on the process. And so folks can look through those slides. And if you have any questions about the process, you can let us know. In here, then, is the mid-year report that Glenn provided to us. And then there is the End of Cycle Report from June 2016 in your packet as well. So that's the process, those are the materials. After Glenn shares his end-of-year information in May, then we would move forward with the evaluation. At this time, I will make a request to the general public, for all those watching, that if they want to share input on the superintendent's performance, they should email it to me. And my email address is m.brolin@abschools.org. And C.C. Beth Petter. And your email address is bpetter@abschools.org. P.E.T.R. Yes, oh, yes, that's very important for the public to know, part of the public record. All right. Then, item 13, in here, we have dates for 2017, 2018 school committee meetings. And a key piece here is we will need to select dates for our annual workshop, potentially in July, and our summer business meeting in August. So there are dates there proposed. We should look at those and come back to our next meeting with, with feedback on whether, which dates work for you. So make sure you plan your vacations and all that, so we can try to find it. It's hard across 11 members and administration to find a time that works, but they're very important meetings, so. Any questions, comments? All right, Superintendent Report?
Thank you. Just a few items, but we'll start the first one with challenge success update. And I'll turn it over to Deb or Dawn.
So there are a few things in your packet. One of them is a memo that outlines just sort of an update around where we are, as well as the fact that we have been accepted as an official district into the consortium, which is, we think, fantastic news for the fall. And then the next piece is certainly our newsletter for the month, as well as a snapshot from their, I think they send it out quarterly, it seems, their newsletter that actually highlighted some of the work we're doing at Acton, Foxborough. So we thought that was kind of cool, so wanted to make sure that we shared it with you.
Thank you. It is, it is kind of cool. It's very cool, and it's a, it's a great continuation of the great partnership that has, certainly has begun here in the district. So thanks to, so thanks to Deb and Dawn. We, as members of the committee know, we do have school committee liaisons with all of our different schools. And while not a regular item, I just wanted to make sure that if there was any news or information that any members of the committee would like to share publicly with their liaison school, that would be a great time to hear that now, if you have anything you'd like to share.
Yeah, so I talked to Joe Gibowitz today, and he wanted me to pass on that the preschool teachers and the entire preschool staff is extremely excited about the idea of an ECC. And they were hoping that, they just wanted to get that out there, that they really like the idea, and they are hoping that we consider it very seriously.
That's an early childhood center, for those who haven't been at our forums yet. So in our options for building, some of them have an early childhood center that brings together pre-kindergarten and kindergarten classes into one program, into one school, so.
Mary, to follow up.
Yes.
The preschool teachers, I do think are one group that we really haven't heard from. One preschool teacher did come to an evening forum with Joe. But besides that, I think we were hoping to see some of them at the teacher forums this week, and I don't think we did. So I don't know if we need to worry about getting, I know you met with them about the options. I don't know if that feedback can be input into our system of data collection, or if we need to encourage them to watch the online version and get their feedback. Because I think to hear it from that group and to have their input in the same format as everyone else's would be helpful.
So that's one thing that Joe and I exchanged emails about. He said that he has encouraged, very strongly encouraged his staff to fill out the evaluation form, the feedback form, and that he will do it again, he will do so again. And I said, you just can go down to Beth's office and pick up the extra forms and then turn them right back in. So he said he would be definitely encouraging his staff to fill that out. By Monday noon. Yes, I explained that he had to have it by Monday noon.
Great. Because this is one thing I am struggling with as I'm preparing to get the data and analyze it, is there is feedback outside of the formal questionnaires, and how, as a committee, how we're going to incorporate that. So we will have to think about that. But as much as, if they could get it into that, it's just easier, so, thank you.
Any others? Paul?
I, early in the year, I reached out to Ed Kaufman over at Marion, and I'll be, we just got back in touch, and I'll be talking with him as a follow-up next week.
Okay, great, thank you. Just a couple of other items for those that are looking ahead, our families, the Open House Fall Dates are already posted and in place. They are, Beth, are they posted online or, at this point as well, too? So for any, any of our families who are looking ahead to get those dates on your calendar, those are available, and so I draw your attention to those. Speaking of start times, just to update the committee, earlier this month, I had the opportunity to meet with almost all of our DCL, our athletic group, that included our athletic directors, principals, and superintendents from almost all of the districts. And the focus of that conversation with a commitment to continue in the fall is around the very, around the very topic earlier tonight, and that's start times, where districts are at, and the impact as it might relate to specifically athletics. Not that it's all about athletics, but obviously, that's a very big consideration for districts. And so we probably had about 25, 28 people in attendance. And as I mentioned, we'll commit to meeting again in the fall. I can say to the committee that everybody is working on this. Everybody is interested in making changes. Some are farther behind, some have been delayed. Newton is an example, as I understand, continues to be so. But it's definitely a topic that's not just alive here in Acton, Foxborough, but everywhere. And so I will keep you posted on future conversations. And finally, it's on the agenda, but just to point out for viewers perhaps at home, the next Family Learning Series, May the 31st, 7 until 8:30, here at the RJ Gray Auditorium. The topic is Social Emotional Life of Young Boys. The audience is for our entire population, pre-K to 12, and Dr. Athany Rao will be presenting. And that, oh, sorry, Deb.
So the location of that had to be moved, and so it's now at the High School Auditorium. And we did receive permission from Dr. Rao just today that we can videotape him. So if parents are not able to come, they can watch it online.
Thank you. And that's it for me.
Can I have a motion to adjourn? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, thank you, everyone.